We are now in session and we're going to have an invocation by Pastor James Booker from the New Light Full Gospel Baptist Church. Welcome, sir.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Oh God of truth, you are our strength, our patience, our light, and our counsel. We ask for your presence in the midst of this and all council meetings. We invoke your spirit in the council decisions that those decisions would be beneficial for the constituents of this great city. Allow productivity, reasonableness, and compassion to be a part of each action and decision. We honor you and thank you for each life and pray for your continued blessings and mercy during this season where many will celebrate Thanksgiving for all of our blessings that you have bestowed. As the psalmist states, "Lord, you have not forsaken us. Lord, you are our shepherd; Lord, you are our protector; Lord, you are our guide; Lord, you are our light. In thee, oh Lord, do we put our trust. Therefore let us never be ashamed of all of our actions." Thank you, oh God, for your creativity in preparing the way for our lives and your mercy. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. The vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I just need to disclose that I was not there for the entire closed session, so I'm voting to certify the part that I was there for.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to certify the minutes of the special formal session of October 29th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Mr. Moss?
I just want to note that the city clerk did include my conflict of interest letter from the Commonwealth attorney with regards to the dome site.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay, do I have a motion on the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of November 12th, 2019?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved those minutes as submitted.
All right, motion for the minute, to approve the minutes of the special session on November 13th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve those minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. At this point, a call for a public hearing on fiscal year 2019, 20 capital budget amendment, school renovation and replacement projects, reversion funds.
First speaker is Conrad Shisventer, and the next speaker will be Barbara Messner.
Conrad here?
I don't see him. Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner is Stephen Johnston.
Welcome.
Good evening. One thing I noticed, this is the second time when you have the joint meetings, there really isn't room for, you know, the residents or people to attend, including the timing, the way you set all those tables around in the square. So it would really be helpful if more people could attend because teachers and parents are usually not available in the middle of the day. During the revenue share, both the city and the school board use a lot of funds, public-private partnership funds, for noneducational things. I just think that the merger of both groups and the attorneys for both, which Moss mentioned before, that that, you know, was improper. I just have a problem with the spending and the reversion funds, which is, I believe Rona Marsh brought up, that there was 20,000 or 20 million in savings and y'all still asked for more money. So I think people need to pay more attention to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Conrad Shisventer, and then Stephen Johnston.
Yes.
Welcome, Conrad.
Sorry for being tardy. Okay, I'm reminded of a Facebook meme that I observed this past week. It was of a sign, and the sign read, "There's no such thing as government-funded, only taxpayer-funded." And I know what they mean, though it comes off as trite. Yes, four million for Lynn Haven metal expansion, 2.5 million for replacement energy management, 335,000 for replacing playground equipment, 300,000 for renovations, 200,000 for annexes road office, 4,500 for ground replacement. It's all taxpayer-funded, but the causes are valid. When we want a government, we want it to do essential tasks. Education is essential. Been running this year, I was interviewed by the VBEA. They wanted to know what I do to secure funding for replacement in construction, and I'll tell you, one step toward that is with tonight's vote. Vote yes.
Thank you.
Stephen Johnston.
Welcome, thank you. I'm here to speak on item one, the $4 million for the Lynn Haven School expansion. They don't tell you about this more specifically. This is to build an Achievable Dreams Academy building on the Lynn Haven campus that will hold, house both middle school and high school students. In 1958, Supreme Court ruled that segregation is illegal in the United States. This building is to house the Achievable Dreams Academy and only them. Putting the high school students at the middle school campus will significantly deny these children their educational and social opportunities that are afforded to all the other academy students in Virginia, Virginia Beach. They won't be able to participate in sports, they won't be able to participate in band or the arts programs, or any of the other social clubs programs that they have in a high school because they're housed in a middle school campus. In Virginia Beach, we have several academies. All of our high school academies are located in a high school. None of them are located in a separate building or on another campus. They're all in a high school. My son, Steven, went to an academy at Bayside. He was allowed to participate in the club activities, he was on the school, I can't remember the name, one of the school teams. He was allowed those things because he was there. Now, the secret that the Virginia Beach School Board doesn't want you to know is that in Virginia Beach, we are currently 90% under capacity. Specifically, Ocean Lakes High School is 76% under capacity. They can house another 700 students at Ocean Lakes High School. Why can't they put the Achievable Dreams Academy at that high school? Why do they have to be separate? Corporate Landing Middle School is at 75% capacity. They could put the middle school program at Corporate Landing, so the kids will go to the same middle school, have the same kids and same group of students, and travel to the same high school and still have that same connection to all the other general education students that needs to happen to form friendships. I don't think we should take the money away from the CIP budget. It needs to be redirected. Now, last July, the school system found out that we had lead contamination in all of our, 42 of our school buildings. Any building built before 1986 has led contamination in the drinking water. I would like to see this $4 million taken away from a building that we don't need and put into replacing the water piping in the schools that we are going to save so we can protect our children and stop poisoning with lead-contaminated water. Thank you.
I have two questions, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnston, by chance, when the school board was considering the adoption of this resolution, did you have proper notice or have an opportunity to address your concern to the school board?
I brought my concerns up with various members on the school board, and as far as the segregation issue, I was told it's voluntary segregation, so therefore it's good segregation. I did not, no, I did not address this specific.
I know you are, I'm just trying to understand what exactly, so you want us, I'm just trying to understand the remedy you're seeking. So you would like us to not approve, when the time comes, it's not today.
Yes.
To amend the resolution they submitted and to redesignate that $4 million to another purpose? I'm not sure we can do that within our category funding, but I'm just trying to understand what you think we can do.
I think what you could do is reject this, send it back to the schools. It wasn't until November that was publicly announced about the lead contamination. And because of that, I would think that would be a higher priority than building a small building that we don't need and use the funds better to protect our children.
I would suggest that we be voting on this the first Tuesday in December, and if you could maybe more succinctly express in writing what you'd like us to do, it might be easier for us to understand the remedy that you seek.
Yes, sir, but I think the remedy could be to reject option one and to have the school board request option one for another use.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, great. Before we go to the consent agenda, I understand we have a Boy Scout troop here visiting 471. Will you come forward with the scout master, please?
They're working on communication and citizenship in the nation.
They're working on communication and citizenship merit?
In the community, yes.
In the community. And we're glad that you can be part of the process. How about one at a time? Come up and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Matthew Truck. I am a star for 471.
Great, thank you, welcome.
I'm Zachary Reyes, and I'm a first-class scout from troop 471.
Welcome.
My name is Carlos Rodriguez, and I'm a life scout for troop 471.
Welcome. And sir, thank you for volunteering a step forward and mentor our future.
I'm Carlos Rodriguez, an assistance scout master for troop 471.
Thank you, and if you could all step forward, I have a button for you that you could wear. And thank you for your community care and your community. Here we go. There you go. And you too, sir.
Shake your hand.
Okay.
Shake your hand.
Oh, there we go. Good stuff. There you go. Good. Welcome. Thank you, very good. Thank you. Okay, at this point, before we get into the consent agenda, I just want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representative of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. As to other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other person who wish to speak on the item at hands. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number of the clerk to record. Also, we have several items under ordinances and resolutions with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item that they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Madam Clerk, do we have one item speakers?
Yes, Ms. Messner has signed up on I-1, the resolution to adopt the city and school revenue sharing formula, and I-7. Ms. Messner?
Ms. Messner. Good evening.
Okay, and you said seven, what was the other one?
The first one.
The first one.
I won and I said.
Revenue sharing formula. Yeah, like I said, I don't agree with the revenue formulas, and I watched some of the meetings, everything's approximate. I mean, I've just never seen worse managed finances. And as I said, I'm going to move on to seven because that's the one I'm prepared on. I thought more people would show up, there were so many people the last time. This is to accept and appropriate $227,136 from the Department of Criminal Justice for the state of Virginia to the 2019-2020 non-departmental operating budget recovery and support from events of May 31st. The city has taken in millions, including, you know, money from the state that Governor Northam has given. There's no accounting. I just did a second FOIA request to find out where all this money's going, and a lot of the money is going to advertising, marketing, and it hasn't all been accounted for. So I just oppose the exploitation, like I said before, of the victim families. They should be honored and respected, and it shouldn't be hashtag fundraisers every five minutes with often just 25% actually going to the fund for the victims. We have no idea where all this money's going. And I'm going to hand a letter to, from John Kucha, who's followed up on the warnings about the building, and I'm going to give that to the clerk for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, move.
No, this, she's only talking about the consent agenda. This is just consent.
I have you signed up, we're not, that's.
Yeah, we're on the consent agenda, then we're going to go into the regular agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval under the consent agenda ordinances and resolutions. Item one, resolution to adopt the city-school revenue-sharing formula policy, noting that Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott are voting no. Item two, resolution to delay for one year the requirement regarding a pawnbroker be a natural person. Item five, resolution to direct the award of a contract to Gov HR USA regarding city manager search. Item six, resolution to reestablish citizens committee on boards and commission. Item seven, ordinance to accept and appropriate $227,136 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 1920 non-departmental operating budget regarding recovery and support from the events of May 31st.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Under planning item J1, Gee's Group LLC, Princess Borough Development Company Corporation for conditional use permit regarding mini warehouse at 1964 Arch, District 7 Princess Anne, and that's consent for deferral to December 3rd, 2019. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood, noting Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott's nay vote on item number one.
Okay, yes, Mr. Moss.
I like to explain by no vote. I think all requirements to put liens on the taxpayers' incomes should be competed. I think entitlements, we've learned, lead to bad public policy. They lead to overspending in good times and underspending in bad times, but no requirement should go without being competed. I have consistently voted against revenue-sharing formula policies because they are just a nice word for entitlement, and good fiscal stewardship is never served well by entitlements. But that does not mean I'm not for education, but all requirements need to be competed in the public space.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir. The vote is open. We voted, yeah. Never mind. End of drill, folks. Okay, moving on to resolution, item under ordinances resolution, number three, resolution raid dome site. A, approval of execution of development agreement. B, authorize development and execution of supplemental documents. C, establish CIP number 9-068 dome site development acquisition. D, appropriate $9 million to CIP 9-068 dome site development acquisition. E, direct the city manager to take certain supplemental actions. And F, make certain findings, raid the preliminary project plan.
The first speaker is Mike Culpepper, and the second speaker is Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Culpepper, and I'm here on behalf of Venture Realty Group, and I'm also here on behalf of our executive team, some of whom are here tonight. Undoubtedly, you have heard our presentation regarding Atlantic Park many, many times, so I'm not going to belabor the discussion tonight. You know that we believe in this project, we believe in our partners, and we believe in a formula. The formula is that tourism revenues can be used to invest in important world-class projects to generate revenues that will support the general fund and schools for years to come. And as they do so, we will have an opportunity to develop a project that's going to attract locals back to the oceanfront and will help inspire the transformation of our resort. As of today, we've been pursuing this project for nearly three years, and that is a very long time. But whether you vote us up or you vote us down, we want you to know that we are incredibly proud to be here today, still standing and pursuing this project. We're proud for our campaign of public engagement, where we reached out and spoke with thousands of people from Blackwater to Bayside about this project. We're proud that we have received community support from many different communities in our city. And for those of you in the audience who have sent emails and messages to the folks on this dais in support of our project, we sincerely thank you. We are greatly appreciative. We're proud of the fact that we have a plan that relies on tourism revenues, not general fund revenues. After all, we are taxpayers and locals as well. And we're proud of the positive impact that Pharrell Williams has made on so many different levels. We're proud to be a small part of a much bigger picture, much bigger than a dome site. This isn't about a surf park or an entertainment venue, it's about making our city better. It's about making the city of Virginia Beach more innovative, more inclusive, and to have an opportunity to create something that is truly unique and a destination for all of our visitors. We humbly ask for your support tonight to take a step to make Virginia Beach a place that we can be proud of, and we want to make you proud with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Conrad.
Excuse me, Mike, Miss Henley has a question for you.
It's been three years, it has been a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
And appreciate all the public input you have done and the willingness to speak out and so forth. And of course, you did the, or there are the economic benefits, and you talked about that we have required that this be something that's paid for by the tourism dollars generated by this project.
Yes, ma'am.
And that you will ultimately be generating money for the general fund and the schools. And in Exhibit B, you say that the project's estimated first stabilized year fiscal impacts is estimated at 8.2 million direct revenue to the general fund, 2.8 million, and to the schools, 1.9. Do you have an estimate as to how long it will be from this time that you will get to this first stabilized year that will give us this fiscal impact?
Yes, ma'am. All of our models are based on stabilized year two or three, depending on which model. We have been conservatively using stabilized year three, and so from today's date, we have a series of phases on which we will get to a year one where we start construction, and by that year three, we will have stabilized revenues that would support the payment of the performance grant.
And we'll then generate this money for the.
On stabilized year one, where you have the project open, operating, and producing the revenues that are forecasted in the economic impact report.
And do you have an estimate of how long that's going to be from now?
Well, let's say five years, up to two years for the pre-development terms that are all described in the development agreement, and thereafter, the third year is when we estimate stabilized year one.
Okay, but you're saying about five years from this point?
From right now, yes, ma'am.
Just so everybody has this.
Yes, ma'am.
Knowledge that this isn't going to suddenly start producing money.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you're estimating, you're hoping for five years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
One more, one, Mike, Mike, Mike. We just love having you.
Popular guy. Well, I love being here, thank you.
Very excited about this for us today, and it went so well this morning, the developer authority. And I know this is not part of the agreement, but I really hope that when you're working things through, that you'll take a really hard look at the apartments to designate maybe 10% for affordable housing.
Yes, ma'am, certainly will.
And what's really nice about this opportunity is they can be integrated into all the regular housing, so everything will look the same, which is really an important aspect of this.
Duly noted.
And we need more of that, and economic, without affordable housing, we're not going to have economic development. Thank you.
Well stated. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Conrad Shisventer, and after Mr. Shisventer is Marcus Gorm.
Welcome back.
I know this whole process took imagination. It took daring do. This project is over 70% private with respectable business interests and enthusiastic home-based celebrities involved. This project is 30% public, but the funding is sourced solely off funds generated by Phoebe Tourism and Restaurants. We'll generate private money in the spirit of capitalism and generate public money replenishing the fund that it invested from, as well as supplementing schools and our general fund. Borrowing from one of my favorite films, this is an adventure 25 years in the making. Manager Lehe, my dear city council, welcome to Atlantic Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus Gorm, and after Mr. Gorm is David Nygaard.
Welcome.
Thank you, hello. I was first thinking about putting everybody up for a vote, if you really believe that I'm stupid or not stupid. Red light for not stupid, green light for stupid, because I think there's a huge disconnect here between the dome site and what you voted on in 2018 to raise the taxes for our flooding. Now, 100 mil, almost 100 million of tax money, if it's tipped or not, it's all generated, it's tax money, is going to the dome site. I would really like to see that we start with our flooding first and then maybe a dome site, that we take care of our citizens and not of some developers, because I do believe that all the risk for the tax revenue will be laid on us and not on the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Nygaard, and then after Mr. Nygaard is Nancy Parker.
Welcome, David.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Thank you, Councilman Tower and Jones, for completing these negotiations. I know they were pretty difficult. I'm here to speak in favor of this project with a few caveats. This project is very important for a section of the oceanfront that has been neglected for way too long. We need this project. Public-private partnerships can be a great force for good, and they can also harm some of our stakeholders. We often focus on what the developers need to complete important projects like this, and that's okay. But sometimes we forget to think about the common laborer who's going to be building this project, people like my son, who works in construction. And often, the little guy doesn't get a voice. So I'm here today to ask you to vote in favor of this project because it's a good project. But I'm also here to challenge the developer for a few things too, as I appreciate the interest in affordable housing. Local businesses create local jobs, and the jobs that are created in this project should remain local, and I challenge the developer to make sure that at least 50%, now I'd like to see 70%, but at least 50% of these jobs should go to workers who live within 50 miles of this project. I'd ask the developer to make sure that all the subcontractors that work on this project are licensed in Virginia and provide all the workers with workman's comp insurance. Oftentimes subcontractors are not required to have this, and when a worker gets injured on these projects, they don't have insurance. So if somebody gets injured, they need to be covered, and workman's comp is that avenue. And let's please make sure that the subcontractors provide certified payrolls. And what I mean here is that often workers are exploited and victimized when subcontractors come in and play low wages under the table. Under-the-table payrolls are ripe for human labor trafficking, and we need to be aware of that. And I think that it's a part of the project, we need to look at that. So I'm asking you to please support this project. It's a good project. But when we look at it, let's also make sure that we implement it and execute it in a way that benefits all of our people. Let's remember the little guy. Let's make sure that we don't encourage human labor. Let's make sure that we don't encourage human labor trafficking with bad policy. Let's give the little guy a voice, too. Thank you.
Nancy Parker. And after Ms. Parker is Barbara Messner.
Hi, Nancy.
Dear Mayor Dyer and members of City Council, my name is Nancy Parker, and I live at on 23rd Street, and I'm president of the Resort Beach Civic League. The Dome Site or the Atlantic Avenue Park Project is before Council tonight to begin the final steps for the contact process. The biggest issue for the surrounding neighborhoods is parking on two levels: during construction and at the time of completion for visitors, office workers, residents, and employees. Is there clarity on the issue of where the trades workers will be allowed to park during the time of construction? Is this a part of the formal agreements recognized by the city and the developer to avoid the same impacts and conflicts experienced by Cavalier Shores and to protect the resort neighborhood streets? Can it be assured there will be no resident residential or employee parking passes issued to employees of the commercial aspects or for the residents of the planned apartments in this project's boundaries? The surrounding neighborhood streets should not become the commercial parking areas due to shortfalls in planning. And we heard that residential parking was something to be protected in this past election. This project is a game changer for the resort district and the city with great possibilities for both financially and culturally. Its success can be a catalyst for more innovations and renewal of the surrounding commercial areas. The adjacent residential neighborhoods welcome projects that respect our sense of community and add a new level of offerings for the city. Thank you for your consideration of the parking issues that will profoundly affect our residential neighborhoods if not realistically addressed. This is signed by the Board of Directors.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Mr. Moss.
I would just like to recognize the Honorable Nancy Parker, who served on this body for multiple terms, and it was a pleasure to serve with Nancy back in 1986 to 1990, and thank you for coming out and thank you for your service.
You're most gracious. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And if you could all would make that a part of your deliberations, that would be most helpful for us. We don't want to be back here again like you had with Cavalier Shores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Diana Howard. Thank you.
That could have been a family entertainment venue. Dolly Parton wanted to have Dollywood. That would have only cost $1 million. This has been tossed around for a long time. I think it's outrageous that the city's using air-land and parking lots, like parking lots, something terrible, but they want to take away our parking lots because they're out of land and build more parking garages. Mr. Moss and Ms. Wilson talked about affordable housing. That's catchphrase for using HUD money for Section 8 and like summer house mixed use. There's not Section 8 people zooming around in those fancy cars. I just don't think HUD money should be used for these projects to fill the hotel rooms year-round. This is just the start of what y'all want. There isn't parking. The person, Mr. Nygaard, surprisingly, that talked about the abuse of some of these slave labor people, they get free parking passes for a month at a time. There's no parking for locals. The municipal lots were set aside for us. They aren't supposed to be used for these projects. There's major conflicts with Venture Realty. And this is a CIP project. It was supposed to be a bid project. You just appointed it to Venture Realty. You're talking about supplemental documents. What are the supplemental documents, and why are you adding something at the last minute? As other people have said, CIP, we should be taking care of the schools, and we should be taking care of the flooding issues. The oceanfront has been flooding for decades, at least since 1980. The hotel people want year-round entertainment to fill the hotel rooms. People don't come to Virginia Beach because of crime. Crime and parking, lack of parking, we don't have the same level of visitors that we used to have. I'd like to know where the proof of financing is from Venture Realty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Howard.
Good evening, Dee. How you doing?
I'm doing good. How are you all doing?
Doing good. Thank you.
Well, last week, Pharrell Williams came here, and he said something about, something to the effect that you should all approve this project so that we could show that we are open for business. Apparently, he thinks that all businesses should be supplemented by taxpayer money, that we should take from the little people and give it to big developers so that they can do these huge projects. Not saying that this isn't a good project, but we should not be the bank for building a parking garage for every developer. Well, we don't build it for every developer, just certain ones, like in the TIF area at Town Center, and now we'll have another TIF area down at the oceanfront. And how many more parking garages are we going to build down there? I guess that's what this $9 million is for, for development acquisition, for more property, to do more stuff down in the Dome Site area, what's to be called Atlantic Park. There is nothing unique about restaurants and shops and retail down at the oceanfront that we should be subsidizing this. We're giving them the land. They're not going to be paying property tax on the land. What are they going to be paying taxes on that we're going to get a part of? We're going to get a part of the sales and use. Any business, we would get the sales and use tax. We would get more of it with other businesses. But whatever happened to leveling the playing field, right? Whatever happened for all businesses to have the same opportunity, you know? Walmart doesn't get to keep its sales and use tax. All businesses don't get to keep that. You just heard him. He's going to like not be making profit, right? Until like five years. And that's it for most businesses. When they start, they don't get in the, you know, the green right away. It takes a couple of years to be able to make money and stuff, right? Mr. Culpepper had come to one of our Taxpayer Alliance meetings, and when he was asked if he would be able to do this project without taxpayer subsidies, and he said, "No." He wouldn't. He wouldn't do this project without taxpayer subsidies. He wouldn't be able to afford to do it. Nobody would give him the money to do it. That should be a red flag. You know what I mean? It's just not right. And we're the ones paying for this entertainment down at, you know, that entertainment venue, the Dome Site thing. Now, Pharrell said, "We need to give people something to do down here." We are not in the entertainment business. That's his business. He has to provide entertainment, and we appreciate all he did with, you know, something in the water. It's a great success. But this is not something in the water. This is our tax money, and we need it elsewhere. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. At this point, Mr. Tower, do we have a motion?
I move the approval of the items listed in number three.
Okay. Second. Okay, we're open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Jess.
I'd just like to make a brief statement. Over the last couple of months of hearing from the community, from calls and emails and even the poll I conducted on this specific topic, it's clear to me that the Dome Site has an enormous level of support. In all honesty, everywhere I went, people asked me to support this project. I believe that it is a unique project that will elevate our city for years to come, and my hope is that it will serve as a cornerstone of our local culture. I've always believed that tourism plays an important role in our economy, but we must also focus on the livability of our residents and the people who call this place home. The project has the potential to create something one of a kind for our residents to enjoy and to celebrate the culture of Virginia Beach. With that said, I have some, I have many reservations about how this project has allocated the debt for its financing mechanism. And earlier this year, I voted against the term sheet for this project because it was presented to, because when it was presented to council, there was no discussion of it benefiting our battle against recurrent flooding. And while the TIP fund is meant for resort area projects such as the dome, I will continue to push for utilizing that vehicle to accelerate funding for flooding and stormwater projects to protect our city's investment at the oceanfront and citywide. As the Virginia Pilot reported this week, Virginia Beach needs an extra $20 million a year to shorten the time it takes to inspect and improve existing stormwater infrastructure throughout the city. Our needs currently exceed our funding in the storm, in the city's stormwater fund, and we, as a council, must do everything we can to better prepare our city for long-term flood resiliency. This is why I'm sponsoring a separate ordinance that ensures 25% of the revenue generated from the dome project will go to fund stormwater improvements, especially considering that we are in the process of searching for a new city manager. A dedicated revenue stream for a major project like this to fund stormwater improvements will reiterate this council's commitment to solving our stormwater infrastructure challenges. And I hope that after this vote, my colleagues and the community can support the following ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Well-stated. Ms. Henley.
I'm not sure if I heard correctly, but one of the speakers mentioned that we would have another, and I'm not sure if she said TIP area or TIF area. This will not be a TIF. Is that correct? This is not tax increment financing. It will get the money to pay the bond debt from the TIP fund, which would be made up of funds particularly generated by this project. Maybe I'm looking at Mr. Stiles. Is that correct? I mean, with all this that's in here, there's so much misunderstanding, I think, about all of this, and I'm not sure how we get everybody understanding everything about it. But this is just one more step in this process, and I know that we have a lot of things that have to be worked out. Most of these things will be worked out as this agreement is followed and progresses along. And clearly, the parking issue, I don't think that's something that we can resolve today as far as how the people during construction will be parking. But there are so many other things that have to come in this process, and this is just allowing the next step of the process to go forward, and I hope everybody understands that. One of the other speakers said that we really should be using this $95 million for flooding today, but the fact is, that money is not available today. It will only come available with this project. And, you know, it's very confusing, as is, you know, I don't want anybody to leave here tonight thinking, "Well, we just allocated a half a million dollars a year for flooding." That won't come to us for another at least five years as the 25% of this amount that might be generated. And I'm not sure that this council can bind a future council to that. I think there are going to have to be steps that we would have to take to further that. And I just really, it's very complicated, and we've still got a lot to do to explain to everybody and answer all the questions. I certainly, for one, am not going to be waiting five years to start funding from the general fund to pay for flooding. We certainly can't do that. So we've got a lot of work to do yet to answer all the questions about exactly what this project is and what it's going to do, and I don't want anybody to leave here tonight thinking that we misled them in any fashion either. We really need to take all of these issues, and as they go forward, they will be taken. Mr. Stiles, could you please let us know, or make some comment about the council's involvement going forward from here and the development authority's involvement?
Yes, Mrs. Henley. By your vote tonight, you are authorizing the development agreement, which is the legal framework for the ultimate development of this project. The development agreement anticipates the preparation and execution of other ancillary documents. You are authorizing the execution of those documents. However, staff has committed to keep you aware and to brief you and to assure that those documents are consistent with the vision that you were approving with this document. There will be other elements that you will have to approve. There will be zoning items. This development agreement also contemplates the creation of a CDA. This council will have to vote and take public input on the creation of the CDA. So there are additional steps for both the City Council and the development agreement, but this is a big and integral step that will enable and get us moving forward to completing all of those other steps that will come to pass.
What could happen that would cause this to not happen?
Well, I think we're all hopeful that it will happen.
Absolutely.
The, there still needs to be discussions regarding additional parcels to be acquired. The financing, the private financing, needs to be completed, and we anticipate that that will, that will happen. The design has to be completed, and then hopefully you start construction. But there are interim steps, and despite everyone's extreme optimism, you know, there are always potentials for problems along the way, but I think the developers worked very diligently with staff to try to anticipate where issues might arise and to deal with those proactively in this development agreement.
Well, I appreciate that because I was asked, since I was the only one who initially voted against the arena, what is different about this, and I certainly don't want to make those comparisons one-on-one. But I think in looking at this agreement, I think we have, we have addressed a lot of the concerns as far as making certain it will happen as this agreement determines, and the city is very much a part of all of this, by owning the parking, by operating the parking facilities, by owning the entertainment facility, having a lot of control in what's happening and so forth. And I think it's very important that we make it plain that, you know, we're, we're going to be very much involved going forward, the development authority, as well as the City Council. And of course, they do have to have the financing, or...
Yes, ma'am.
We won't go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's covered, and I think we do have some lessons learned in this because I noticed in several places in the development agreement that it says that if these things are not done, everybody walks away and there's no legal challenge. I think I read that. So I hope that we have learned from things in the past and that we've got things in a much better frame, and I think this can be a very good project for the oceanfront, provided we all continue to work hard together. Thank you.
Aaron.
Just want to say, you know, we talked about, and we all, when I was elected and a few of us, when we was on the campaign trail together, we talked about transparency, and that tonight, it was mentioned a level playing field. Well, I take my hat off to Venture and their group for the level of transparency that they have contributed to this entire process, from the community involvement, reaching out to the community, but also reaching out to those who have apprehensions about this, about this project going forward. They still went out and met with those people, answered the tough questions, and to present a level of transparency. So the process is there, and I want to commend everyone on the process, particularly our liaison, Councilman Tower and Councilman Jones, for making sure that when we have these questions come up, that there was nothing done behind closed doors, that everything was done and alight so that we can begin to instill trust from the public that we, as a body, as a council, are doing our homework and do diligence to making sure that we present a clear and a level playing field. So again, I'm inclined to support this project, not only for the vision and what it would mean for our city going forward, but also the process in which we got here. And like Ms. Councilwoman Henley just stated, this is just the next step in that process.
Rose Mary. And then Jim.
Well, there's sometimes this expression that sometimes things have worked out for the best, and we've had... the best, and we've had so many missed opportunities for this particular site, and I'd kind of forgotten about Dollywood, it was mentioned tonight, way back with Dollywood, and then the Michael Jenkins project, and then they wanted to put an outlet mall there, and all these different things that kind of came and went, and I'm glad they came and went because this is a unique project, it's exciting, it's going to really put so much of an emphasis on Virginia Beach. People are going to be attracted to this and come here and put their heads in the beds and the shoulder seasons, and it's going to be really a wonderful, wonderful project for our city. And I do think that the Venture folks have been, they have met with anybody that moved, I think, that had an interest in it. They've been really wonderful to work with the public, so I think it's very exciting. I live right down there, I will see this project every day, and it's, and I'm excited for my grandchildren to come and utilize, especially experiential retail. Still got my fingers crossed, get Legoland. Anyway, it's a wonderful project, and everyone has worked long and hard on it for many years, and I'm glad to support it tonight.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. I'd like to echo a lot of what Ms. Wilson just said. It's definitely an exciting and unique project, and it's desperately needed. And I think back to the very first election I had, and I remember the fact, and the people, stakeholders there were asking for some sort of transformative entertainment venue down there that would be able to be enjoyed by both visitors and residents. And, you know, I think it's good that we're finally getting past this. I do have to echo also what Mr. Rouse said in terms of what the liaisons have done, Mr. Tower, Mr. Jones have done a phenomenal job on this, the staff has worked very hard, Mr. Lee, his predecessor, Mr. Stiles, his people, but I'd be remiss if I didn't single out one person on the development team, and that's Mr. Culpepper, because he has done a fantastic job at this. And I remember a few years ago, he called me and said, you know, they were thinking about maybe, maybe working on something for the Dome site, and what did I think about? And I kind of laughed at him, I recall. I said, you know, that's a tough climb, and, you know, he kept going after it repeatedly and was never afraid to go engage different civic groups, which really impressed me. And I think if more than one person was meeting somewhere, he'd show up and give the presentation. So I think he did an excellent job of being the public face of this team and leading the team. I think he did a great job on that, and obviously, I certainly support this.
Anybody else? Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Dome site development has been a development opportunity for a long time that has been waiting to happen. And over the years, the city of Virginia Beach has had several individuals and entities interested in developing the site. However, in the end, none of the proposals that we have entertained before were credible from a financial sense or a timely sense. Development of the Dome site requires sensitivity to the surrounding residential and commercial community. The development must be unique to, and to, compatible to, and supportive of both the surrounding homes and the tourism industry, which it is supposed to enhance. There needs to be evident features that benefit the Virginia Beach community as a whole, and this proposed project fulfills those requirements. The project will support itself through its generation of tax revenues sufficient to carry the debt service on the bonds that will be sold to finance the project, provide a fair return on the developer's investment, and it will contribute to and enhance the Virginia Beach residential and business community as a whole. The project will provide excess tax revenue and fees after debt service to provide much-needed additional parking for the project, as well as the general public, beachgoers. Schools will receive additional funding from the project, and the general fund will receive additional funding from the project. For the first time, the clearing of the Dome site property, since the clearing, a developer has come forward with a proposal on this site that not only meets the needs of the tourism industry, but it also contributes to the overall general welfare of the Virginia Beach taxpayer public. And I want to thank Mike Culpepper and the Venture Group and all of the people involved with it for their efforts and the manner in which they have conducted themselves and negotiated this project, and I'm proud to be one to support it.
Mr. Tower.
I certainly could completely join in my colleague, Mr. Jones's comments, and without repeating any of the very cogent and well-stated comments, let me just say, in addition to the transparency that Mr. Rouse mentioned, I want to make it clear, since the level playing field issue was mentioned, that this project was competed, RFQ was issued forward, and Venture competed to get that RFQ and did so with vigor and imagination and creativity that was not matched by any of the other competitors and won it fair and square. Anyone could have competed for that, but they did so and completed it. The other thing I want to emphasize is that this is an investment for all taxpayers in the city. We cannot assure what will happen in the future, but this is an investment made, hopefully, to assure a financial return and the creation of an actual venue that everybody in the city will enjoy as well. It's hard to find projects that have even the promise of that, and I'm excited about it. I think it's a great thing. I think the oceanfront needs it, but more importantly, the city needs it because we are very dependent on the tourism industry, and this is exactly the kind of thing that the industry needs to keep it fresh, alive, and bringing people to our city and spending money here and creating a tax base that will afford to pay for flooding issues and all the other needs we have in the state. My hat's off to Mike and all the other Venture folks as well, and to our staff, which labored incredibly hard. As the only lawyer on council, I want to say to Mark Stiles and all of his crew, they did a great job on this as well and really worked hard. It's been a great thing. I would like to ask Mark one question if I could. When do you anticipate, Mark, just so we all know, that issues such as parking during construction would be addressed in the phasing of the documents?
I anticipate that would be taken care of during the due diligence phase.
During the due diligence phase, which is the next phase after the Development Agreement. So it's definitely something for treatment at that point. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
If I could just say, we have a tremendous opportunity in front of us, you know, for a number of reasons. When you think about the synergy and energy that we're going to have with the Sports Center coming online, with the Vibe District, and now we're going to have, if we go through with the Dome site deal, we are going to become even a more true destination for all the people in Virginia Beach and 757 to come out and enjoy their beach. But I think it also sends a positive message to those who want to do business with, you know, Virginia Beach in the future, with the level playing field that we've demonstrated. When you think about the creativity, the uniqueness, and ingenuity of putting this deal together, yes, it did take a couple of years to do it, but I think what we wound up with, it was a truly significant deal that many, many people can live with right now. But once again, this is just going to offer a plethora of opportunity going forward, and, you know, I am proud of this council, I'm proud of the work that went in with the developer, the coordination and everything that went into this, you know, and I think we got the deal that I really think is going to benefit Virginia Beach in the short term and the long term. At this point, the vote is open.
I have a vote of 10 to 0, and Mr. Moss abstaining. You have approved the resolution regarding the Dome site.
Mr. Moss.
Yeah, I'm enjoined from engaging in this wonderful conversation, but since some people seem to think that I'm on the Board of Directors for Dominion Energy, I assure you that I am not. But if they're looking for a board member, I will volunteer. But I would like to read into the record my Conflict of Interest letter that I wrote to the city clerk, and then I'm going to read the one that was by the Commonwealth attorney. To the city clerk, pursuant to State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I make the following declaration. I'm executing this written disclosure regarding a resolution, one, approving the execution of a Dome site development agreement, two, authorizing development and execution of a supplemental documents, three, establishing a capital project 9-068, quote, Dome site development acquisition, unquote, four, appropriating $9 million to CIP 9-068, five, directing the city manager to make certain supplemental actions and make certain findings regarding the preliminary project planned, and an ordinance to dedicate Dome project revenues to stormwater improvements, so it can apply to the next issue, so people won't have to go through this again. Two, the resolution includes the possible acquisition of property that would have a foreseeable direct or indirect benefit or detriment for Dominion Power, also known as Dominion Energy. I have a personal interest in Dominion Energy, and its corporate street address is 120 Dragar Street, Richmond, Virginia, 23219. I wish to disclose this interest and abstain from participation in the City Council's consideration and votes on this resolution and the ordinance and other such qualifying motions. Abstentions pursuant to Conflict of Interest Act 2.2-3115 (F) As discussed in the attached opinion from the Commonwealth attorney, I also have an interest in a separate corporation that receives income from a parcel that is possible within the footprint of the Dome site. If that parcel is acquired for this project, I will forthwith disclose my interest in that separate corporation. Accordingly, I respectfully request to record this declaration in the official record of the City Council. Thank you for your assistance and cooperation in this matter. John D. Moss, Council Member. And this is the letter that I actually, the ruling that I received from the Commonwealth attorney. To Councilman Moss, in a letter dated September 24, 2019, you requested an opinion under the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act regarding your participation in the Virginia Beach City Council discussions and voting regarding a proposed joint project between the city of Virginia Beach, the city of Virginia Beach Development Authority, end quotes, the authority, close paren, and a developer for the Dome site project. You asked whether your personal interest in both Dominion Power and an unnamed corporation, open paren, the corporation, close paren, causes you to have a prohibited personal interest in the transaction. According to your letter, you received dividend income in excess of $5,000 per year from Dominion Power. As part of the project, the plan is for the city of Virginia Beach to acquire a parcel described as 18th Street parcel that is currently owned by Northak Southern Corporation that is currently being used by Dominion Power. For the purposes of the Dome site project, Dominion Power would no longer be able to use this parcel, and as a result, would likely require a significant payment as a result. Additionally, you received dividend income from the corporation in excess of $5,000 per year. The corporation receives income from a parcel described as the other parcel that is within the possible footprint of the Dome site project and would require the property be purchased by either the authority or by the developer. According to your letter, should the site footprint require the purchase of the 18th Street parcel, and the parcel was purchased by either the authority or the developer, the income stream to the corporation in which you have a personal interest would cease. There may come a point in time where, as a result of the actions taken by the developer, the authority, and the City Council without your participation, that Dominion Power and the corporation no longer may realize a reasonable foreseeable direct or indirect benefit or detriment as a result of the Dome site project. In the event of such a change and circumstances, you may feel free to request an update or revision to this opinion. Sincerely, Colin D. Staley, Commonwealth Attorney for the city of Virginia Beach. And then with that, based on some differences of opinion, I will be seeking further clarification. As to when in this process, I may be at liberty to speak, but until then, I'm enjoined in silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay. Okay, moving forward, we have a, you know, a, what I think is a very good concept here, ordinance to dedicate 25% of the general fund revenues generated by the Dome site project to stormwater improvements, requested by Councilmember Abbott. Any speakers?
I'm sorry. Conrad Schisventer is the first speaker, and Barbara Messner is the next speaker.
Welcome, Conrad.
One of the key selling points with Atlantic Park is how public investment is limited to the tourism investment. With this ordinance created by Councilwoman Abbott, another selling point is that the public funds generated by its economic activity will specifically help our stormwater improvements. As I like to echo the opportunity cost of funding to flooding by many Tea Party and Republican friends, I'll take great enthusiasm toward this ordinance as it settles as much concerns as possible. Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner is Diana Howard.
Yeah, I thought this was going to be before the vote, since it pertains to the Dome site, and I think only 25% is an insult after all the grandstand, I'm not going to go there, but I just think there's a bit of a conflict with the stormwater and the sale of insurance, flood insurance, and Mr. Moss is the only one that abstained. This is a supermajority vote on city land, and if you look at the statement of economic interests, it's, there are a lot of people here that have taken money from the developers. You're specifically funded by the developers, and you voted for this project not to represent the people. As far as the Economic Development Authority, I'm sure y'all saw this, I brought this, Ms. Allen made this chart before, Warren Harris, he abruptly resigned in 2018. You appoint the people to planning, you appoint them to RAC. Nobody mentioned that Venture Realty is Kate Sesam's Napolitano and Will Sesam's daughter. I mean, the conflicts are outrageous. Warren Harris resigned in October 8, 2018, council-appointed. Jerry Miller, appointed by council, he won the bid for the Green Flash and Sanjay Cortafina projects. John Richardson is on the Board of Town Bank and Vice Chair of Kaufman &amp; Canoles, Mr. Tower's firm. Prescott Sherrod was on Town Bank Director and appointed to Virginia Beach Economic Development. Doug Ellis, Ellis Gibson, is on the Board of Town Bank. The conflicts are outrageous, and y'all can spin everything all you want, but the majority of the people do know what's going on. Thank you.
Diana Howard, and after Ms. Howard is Tim Wurst.
Welcome back.
Hi. Okay, just to be clear, what I was talking about, Ms. Henley, was that $9 million that we're buying, that money could be used elsewhere, like flooding. So, I mean, that is something we are spending now, appropriating now, right? And it's like a TIF, it even says that this project is going to be like a town center, and they're going to do, I think it's called like an SSD, they're going to put an extra tax on there, I think 25 cents above and beyond the real estate tax, right, to pay for the obligations to this project. That's on top of the $5 million a year in the gap financing or opportunity, whatever, the performance grants, right? So that's what I was referring to, and how many businesses closed because of town center? Because they couldn't compete with town center? How many businesses did we lose because of that? So, they're competing with the rest of the oceanfront. And I do appreciate that you want to use a portion of the tax revenue that we're going to get to the general fund, which is less than $3 million, and 25% of that, if my math is correct, is around $700,000, right? A drop in the bucket to the $20 million that they say we need in addition just for maintenance, right? So, what I think we should be doing is a funding formula for what our priority is in this city. is a funding formula for what our priority is in this city, and that is for the stormwater maintenance, not for entertainment. And this notion that the tip belongs to the oceanfront is ridiculous, okay? Y'all didn't think the light rail tax belonged to Light Rail, that elsewhere, or that the ARP belonged to you. They took it away from agricultural, they gave it to Light Rail. You put the money where you think it's most important, and unfortunately, you think it's most important at the oceanfront. There is no deficiency down at the oceanfront. I don't see how. We are deficient down there in entertainment. We just built a sports center. How much did that cost us? $68 million. $68 million. We all know where your priorities are.
Tim Wurst.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, sir. I attribute my comfortable dress code to being a fantastic substitute PE teacher today at Lynn Haven Middle School. Go Blue, which is very enjoyable. Is that you?
Go Blue.
All right.
Me too.
Another one. Good kids. Mostly. Said that live, didn't I? So Jessica's idea-
There's a work in, Tim, so.
Sir?
Other schools you can work in.
That's true. Go Kemsfield. Jessica's idea is fantastic. This ordinance is a fantastic idea. And like Ms. Henley said, we do need money now, and we need that money for flood maintenance. But this 25% would be a big help, and it would help that 20, fill that $20 million hole we need each and every year, not just one time. The only idea I think is better than Jessica's is for free parking, or $3 parking, at the dome site or Atlantic Park. That's an idea that might get the rest of us locals down there to the oceanfront. And lastly, as Mr. Rouse said about transparency, I think we can have some transparency going forward, if we can get the same transparency going forward with the project about contractors, subcontractors, subcontractors, et cetera. And nobody on council or the VBDA that is getting richer off this project, and it's totally back to tourism and back into this project to make it better, I think we would be happy. So I wish Godspeed to Michael Culpepper, who is a stand-up person, and I wish him the best on this. My last comment, Mr. Moss read it off page after page about a conflict of interest that he have, that he has. Yet here in Virginia Beach, our conflict of interest reads so that we are able to vote for our own family members that are on other committees. How is that possible? How is it possible we're able to vote for our own family members on other committees and councils and VBDA's? We're lacking there. Well done, Jessica, on this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Jessica, do you have a motion or revision?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance with the revised version that I just passed out per our discussion in informal session. There's, towards the bottom, the update says the city council hereby dedicates 25% of the general fund revenues generated by the dome project for stormwater improvements. This dedication set forth in the preceding sentence shall not apply the revenue that would be appointed to schools pursuant to city/schools revenue sharing policy. So with that change, I ask that we adopt.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, discussion.
If I could just ask the city attorney, since this money won't be available for several years, is there something else that we need to do to make it a dedicated funding source at an appropriate time? I mean, can we do this this far in advance? And also, I would want to make certain that this money doesn't just supplant money that the city already is funding for stormwater, but is in addition to. I don't want it to be like, you know, the infamous lottery when the state took back what they were already funding and, you know, supplanted the lottery. This is certainly a feel-good thing, and, you know, I'll vote for it, but I don't want to make it look like we're doing something that we don't really have the ability to do at this time. Are you, are we able to do this now?
Excuse me. Yes, Mrs. Henley, this is legally sufficient. It is not binding on a future council. A future council could change it, just like they could change any dedication, but it is legally sufficient to be adopted this evening.
But the very fact that we can't bind a future council, can we also not indicate that it would be our intent that it not supplant funding, that it be in addition to, or we would just hope that they would do the right thing at the right time?
That language could be included as well?
Well, I'll just go ahead and vote for this, but I do just want to, you know, I wanted to make sure that I was making my concerns known, because I don't want anyone to think that I think that we're doing something immediately, because we're not. And we're going to have to be, I mean, when folks say, well, I thought y'all were going to get all this money from the dome project to do stormwater, we know that it's not. And we're going to have to be funding a lot of other money from the general fund and other sources to do funding for flooding in the meantime. We're certainly not going to wait five years for this.
Okay, Michael.
Well, I just would like to state that I have the great privilege and responsibility of serving from the Rose Hall District, which was the district which was most significantly impacted by Hurricane Matthew in 2016. And it's also one of the most, the districts which is most impacted by recurrent flooding. That's related to stormwater systems that are, in some cases, operating at a capacity that is below what is necessary, systems which are in desperate need of maintenance and repair and improvement in operations, and a district where additional flood control projects are necessary, because residents of Virginia Beach, in my view, should not have to live in fear that their homes will flood, and many of our neighbors do. So, in my mind, this ordinance responds to one of our city's most important public policy priorities. And while it may not bind a future council, I think that it demonstrates this council's commitment to funding responses to recurrent flooding and to improving stormwater systems. And in fact, a future council, while not bound by this ordinance, would have to effectively change it. And I think that adopting this ordinance now would set, for lack of a better word, a barrier where that, let put it this way, it would cause future councils greater consideration as they consider funding responses to stormwater systems and improvements. And I also believe that the ordinance helps to build public trust and confidence in the Atlantic Park project. In my opinion, and I didn't have, I didn't take the opportunity to speak on the project in the previous ordinance, but I think the project is an exciting opportunity for Virginia Beach. I think it's an enhancement for our economy and quality of life, but I think it's also critically important that residents of Virginia Beach have confidence and trust, and I think this ordinance goes a long way into helping to build that trust. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Abbott for introducing it and say that I'm very proud to support it.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Sabrina.
I, I think that this is a very beneficial resolution. And I remember reaching out to our former city manager, asking the same question. Could we designate funding from this project to stormwater? And at the time, and I was looking at the response today, didn't really get a yes or no answer, but the response was based on projections. We're not sure what the projections are, therefore, we could not really say yes or no. And I believe in our last meeting, Mr. Leahy, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure, but I think you were saying something to the effect that you could work the numbers or could figure that out. And I was hoping to see something as it relates to numbers for this particular proposal. Or were you mentioning the information that's already listed here?
Well, the, as, as it's indicated in some of the numbers that we have put forward, this ordinance would net out when the, in year five and beyond, 25% of a estimate, of a number that's estimated to be about $3 million in year one, and would probably grow in future years. And if this ordinance is on the books, that money will go to stormwater, and it certainly would be up to the staff at that time to not, as Ms. Henley indicated, supplant it, to make sure that that would go to needed projects and additional projects.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's not just something that, you know, because it's beneficial and that it sounds good, but it's something that's concrete that will actually take place. Because as I understood before, it was hard to determine what would come out.
Certainly a very good first step. 25% of $3 million is about $750,000, and that is not compared to the, I think approximately $45 to $50 million we're investing in stormwater today, and that, a number which will be much larger in the future. As you can see, it's additive to that. It's a good first step, and it may be, there may be other funding sources the council chooses to also dedicate to stormwater and flood control in the future. So it's a good first step.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Let me say, I wholeheartedly support this initiative, because once again, going forward, if we're, and we had the five-year forecast today, and it was a wake-up call. It was a confrontation with reality. For us to combat stormwater rise and everything, we're going to have to find ways of new revenue streams coming in. And there have to be new revenue streams that don't bring in displacement. It's got to be, you know, money. But when we tie this type of initiative that Councilmember Abbott has, it, once again, I think Michael said, it demonstrates, you know, to the, to the community that we are serious about acknowledging in that in our decision process going forward. But once again, I think this is a great initiative, and I think it really enhances the dome site project that we just voted on, that we are taking these things in consideration. The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the revised resolution.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Moss.
I'm not going to make another statement. I just want my letter to show up under both items.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have a planning item, which is J. 2 Jeffrey and Paige Mandrickle at, for a street closure at 334 square, raise, 334 square feet portion of an unimproved right-of-way adjacent to the rear of 317 45th Street, District 6, Beach.
Mr. Bernard, do you want to make com, I have you for questions only. The only speaker we have is Barbara Messner. Correct. Ms. Messner.
All of these street closures, this brings up the parking issue, because roads are closed repeatedly, Eighth Street, the Ninth Street Garage. The equivalent of what they're asking for is 334 square feet of unimproved right-of-way. The right-of-way is supposed to be for public access. This is the size of approximately a two-car garage. Just, you're constantly, you know, having street closures and giving away right-of-ways, selling right-of-ways, and, you know, all the discussion about the flooding, you know, it clearly says that it's not binding for the future council. I mean, you're not doing anything about the main, the main problems that we have in the city. And I don't understand why you can abstain, Mr. Moss, and not leave the room like Will Sesam's did. If you abstain, I thought you weren't supposed to be involved in the discussions. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all the speakers.
All right. Yep, Mr. Tower.
This one has been asked for deferral.
Yeah. Motion for deferral.
A move for deferral.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote is open.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yeah.
I just want to respond, since someone's been accusation, or at least in inference, I should rephrase that. I asked in advance if I, since I have to vote to abstain, I haven't participated in any other public hearings, workshops, executive sessions on Atlantic Park slash Dome Site, but since this was the night we were voting, I am eligible and allowed to sit here and listen, and then passively abstain. So I'm in full compliance with the Conflict of Interest law and the advice I've received from the city attorney and the Commonwealth attorney. So I am fully in compliance with the law.
Thank you.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've deferred the item indefinitely.
Okay, Vice Mayor Wood, appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate, following individuals to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Janice Anderson, and that's going from an alternate to a full member, Thomas Holland, Miles Pock, to also going from an alternate to a full member, David Whitley, to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board, David Jester, to the Community Organization Grant Review and Allocation Committee, James L. Booker, to the Community Services Board, Lori Bridges, to the Historic Preservation Commission, Ariat Friendzel and Bobby Gribble, to the Historical Review Board, Brian Faesmeyer and Charles Hightower, to the Oceanana Land Use Conformity Committee, Captain John Hewitt, the commanding officer of Oceanana, to the Open Space Advisory Committee, Clay Burnick, to the Planning Commission, Donald Horsley, to the Resort Advisory Commission, Elizabeth Baumann, Christina Chastain, and Russell Lyons, to the Southside Network Authority, Pedro Wallace. Nomination, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. Votes open on the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. On the names listed.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've appointed as those read by the vice mayor.
Okay, we have another item open.
So for the Development Authority, I nominate William Brown.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have other nominations, I believe.
Okay, okay. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are. I'd like to present nomination, Mrs. Rona K. Marsh.
Okay, we have two, yes?
Tell us how we do this.
Okay, okay. What is the voting procedure?
Your procedure is utilized for many years is to have a standing vote for each of the persons nominated in the order they were nominated. Even if the first person gets the majority, you still vote on the second person, and the person with the highest votes is appointed.
Okay, then we'll open the vote on Dr. Brown first.
It's not a yes or no vote. Well, it is a yes or no vote, but I think typically the clerk calls the-
We can actually do it.
Okay.
We set it up.
You set it up, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Berlucia and Mr. Tower, I need your votes, please. Thank you. By a vote of eight to three for Mr. Brown.
Okay, and our second, next vote will be on Rona Marsh.
One second, we're opening the vote. Go ahead. Mr. Berlucia, Mr. Tower, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. The vote is three to eight to appoint Mrs. Marsh.
Okay, there you go. Okay, thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? We stand adjourned.